Alright, welcome in everyone. I'm gonna just let it go for a little bit in the stream to work out some tech things. But pretty much, we're gonna be going over this past week's San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors meeting. That streamed on December 3rd and it didn't, it's not actually an hour and seventeen minutes. We're just waiting for everything to start here, but pretty much, I'm just gonna take it through of... Yes, it is the Board of Supervisors from San Bernardino County. Thank you Stardust. And yeah, so Board of Supervisors for San Bernardino County, the largest county in California and the entire United States. They actually did a kind of interesting thing here if you wanna see this.
The center that doesn't have to transfer any patients.
So just, the usually how the Board of Supervisors starts their meetings is they actually hold in San Bernardino City. They have the Chamber of, the Chamber there that they stream from. So that's where we'll see them coming in today. We'll just start from the top here, but pretty much, you know, just a day-to-day or week-to-week thing. If you ever got the opportunity to go to this location, it's actually pretty cool. So we're just gonna watch this for a little bit, full React style.
Supervisor Hagman, Supervisor Baca?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have three. The first one was Anne Hyatt of Rialto. She was ninety-two years of age. She worked for the Rialto Unified School District as a library tech for nine years. And twenty years at Henry Elementary and Eisenhower High School. She received the Lifetime Achievement Award from Casey Elementary. She was involved with the President of the Ladies Auxiliary for the San Bernardino Fire Department. And this one's personal for me because I grew up with her grandson, Mark Hyatt. And her husband, Anne's Hyatt, actually was my baseball coach in Little League at the Rialto Eastern Little League.
Wow.
I just spent a lot of time at her house.
Let's just take a little pause here. One little critique I have is that the official YouTube channel for Camberdiana, Camberd, San Bernardino County, they don't even have closed captions on for their YouTube videos. So it's all just audio, so not very accessible to those who don't, you know, don't hear. But you know, just having closed captions is what I tried to turn on right now for us watching the stream, but nothing. So we'll just keep listening. It only has three upvotes and the official county... Only has, this video only has forty-nine views. Absolutely insane, forty-nine views. And three upvotes. We'll go ahead and do that. That's pretty sad. But yeah, so this is where every week, different, the different county departments get together, have different board items that they need to be approved because, as you know, the, you know, these people are representations of each individual district in San Bernardino County. Jesse Armendaras, this gentleman right here, he represents, actually, you know what? Let's pull up all the districts. Here we go. So depending on where you live in San Bernardino County, this is who represents you. This is like such a hard website to use. Alright, so looks like, whoops, 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 whoops. Yeah, again, such a bad website, but you know, we're not here to completely crap on the county of San Bernardino. Oh, I guess this is just Jesse Armendaras District. Interesting. So yeah, it's kinda confusing. District map. Oh, this is Dawn Rowe. Okay, well, let's go to the each individual Board of Supervisors, starting with the Chair, Dawn Rowe. She was the lady that you saw at the beginning, who's kind of leading the thing because she's the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, right? So she's kind of the one who heads up everything. Well, I was gonna try to find, how to find the districts, but anyways, you can look that up later on your own. But we have Mr. Jesse Armendaras. He's my district representative. I live in the city of Rancho Cucamonga. And haven't been able to talk to him or get to know him or anything. There is also, you guys might know Joe Baca. He's also another Board of Supervisor along with Colonel, or retired Colonel. I don't know what his name is. Cook, I just know his name is Cook. Last name Cook.
Or whomever you have with you today? Just do it. Come on. We'll form for a photo afterwards and all. Just anywhere you want. Come on up.
Hmm, looks like they're giving out an award. I'm not sure for what though, but let's find out.
So we are presenting a proclamation in honor of Geographic Information Systems, otherwise known as GIS Day. GIS is a technology which visualizes data tied to geographic locations to enable informed decisions-making, decisions across various sectors. In San Bernardino County, Innovation and Technology Department, GIS team works closely with numerous departments to support services such as urban planning, emergency services, response, infrastructure development, and much more. We would like to thank you all for your contributions and recognize the power of GIS. And we also have ESRI in the Third District, and ESRI is known as the Science of Ware. And it has been so fascinating for me to get involved with and learn GIS and how it, County Fire I see up there, all the different applications where we use GIS. And so it is neat to honor this today, and thank you very much for all the work that you all do.
Amazing, so they're giving an award to some scientist. Some of you who might be a little bit more familiar with ESRI and GIS, I really don't know too much about them, but I know that they're kind of land mapping type of things or different surveying type of things. So yeah, this is, this is what they do. They, everything that gets sent to the board, let's fast forward a little bit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are no reportable items from closed session.
Right, and reports from our CEO Luther?
Alright, good morning, Madam Chair.
Alright, so the CEO Luther, he's a newer CEO of the county. Some of you may remember there was a big kind of scandal that happened with the previous CEO of the county. Mr. Luther Snoke was the CEO that replaced the previous CEO who had scandals surrounding around him. So far, it seems like he's doing a great job. I don't have any notes on him. I don't know anything about him. I knew that when he started, he didn't have this goatee, but that's neither here nor there.
Something kind of fun.
So let's hear what he has to say.
Trevor and Martha come up into the well. So on the consent calendar today, item number sixty-two, the Board will be considering adopting a new county flag. So I'm gonna ask them come up and share for the Board and for the public here, what our proposed county flag will look like.
Wow.
So the current county flag was adopted in nineteen eighty-four, so it's forty years old. There's an opportunity here for some modernization to occur. Why don't you turn around too? You can model it for the public. Kinda lift it up high so all can see, you know, the beautiful flag. So the number of different thematic elements here, we have the five stars representing the five supervisory districts, the mountains, the gold line representing our high desert, and then the blue line representing the valleys. Really a cool crisp design. We tried to align it mostly with flag standards that are out there. There are a couple of elements that we took some liberties on here, but this is the flag that is presented on item number sixty-two today, and we just wanted to...
Alright, so real quick, wanted to show you guys what the old flag looks like. It is this guy right here. Pretty standard. Oh, they already got kind of the new one out too, huh? I wonder if they did a press release on that or something. But anyways, the old flag is, I'm sure a lot of people are like, what? Counties have flags? You know, I mean, cities have flags. We don't really know too much about that too, but pretty much every government, like organization has a flag or something representing it. So I think this is a pretty good update.
An opportunity to share that with the Board and the public before the Board considers it.
Thank you all. Appreciate the work.
I'm glad that this is one of our top priorities.
And we will move on to our individual Board member comments. Vice Chairman Cook? Supervisor Hagman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I haven't got scolded by Colonel Cook because as a military person myself, I realize you're not supposed to wear covers indoors, and I apologize, but I had some cancer stuff taken out earlier last week, so this is to keep it.
What? Okay, so the other Board of Supervisor Kurt Hagman, I guess he was having trouble between the... They were bantering about wearing a hat inside, but I guess he got cancerous cells. That's kind of concerning. Anyways, let's continue.
But I'm not trying to ruin the protocol of not wearing a cover. I wanna highlight item number twenty-nine on the agenda, which is four million dollars between libraries and our discretionary funds to help Chino Preserve Community Center and Library. So that's gonna really greatly increase...
Four million dollars.
Quality of life for our residents in Chino Valley. I also wanna join my colleagues remembering the fourteen victims at the two hundred, two thousand fifteen terrorist attack here, and thank that the staff had the moments that we did on this week, as well as their families and survivors. I wanna thank the Environmental Health, participating with Upland Chamber of Commerce, and the Public Health Practices for businesses that we had not too long ago. And finally, SCAG received six million dollars from Department of Transportation to support Safe Streets in advance of the twenty-twenty Olympics. We're starting to work on that on the SCAG, and we're all gonna need to be ready in a couple of years for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Baca?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanna highlight two items on the agenda, which are great projects, and I know they've taken a lot of work, so I wanna thank staff. You know, the first one is item thirty-eight, and this is the toward design build for the Pacific Village project. I know we've been talking about this project for a few years now and mentioned it. You know, the county of San Bernardino owns approximately seven acres on the Third and Fifth District border in the city of San Bernardino. They've owned this property. We have some units there, some trailers there. What we're actually looking at doing is adding permanent supportive housing, substance use disorder beds, and making sure that there's recuperative care for many, many individuals. So it's continue to take a step forward to address the issue of homelessness. I know we won't solve it, but the county has done a great job in taking the lead on this issue, so it's gonna bring much-needed housing and treatment to many of our individuals.
That's kinda interesting that Mr. Baca says that because I don't know about you guys, but it seems like the homeless population has only been rising in this county. And I mean, during COVID, it was pretty bad, but like now, I don't know, you guys have to let me know. But it just seems like it's gotten worse, so I'm really curious to know what exactly they are doing to fix that.
The other item is item forty-five. It's a small item, but I think it's important. Third Street and Pacific Street, we have improvements for some of our bus stops and bus shelters in the Fifth District, especially in particular in these areas. We have a high amount of ridership, so the ridership's very, very high. So this will give those riders dignity, the opportunity to wait in a shelter throughout the rain, the cold, the hot weather, and the dry weather we have here. So this is great work. I wanna thank public work for their great work on this, on this item. I just wanna mention during one of the committees, Laughco, which myself and Supervisor Hagman serve on, I wanna thank you for support on this. What we did is we voted to connect sewer from the city of Rialto to this Bloomington Development. We're actually in the process of moving a housing project, which is one hundred and eighty-one units condos for sale. But the great thing about this is that there's eight units for sale that are going to be affordable with a fifty-five-year covenant. This is great for housing, much-needed housing in the Bloomington community and the county of San Bernardino. I just wanna thank my colleague Supervisor Hagman for his support on that. I just wanna announce that Bloomington High School, it's good to see that some of the actions were taken. I know Supervisor Hagman mentioned, you know, money being provided, but it's good to see these things come to fruition. So we gave a half million to Bloomington High School for their baseball team to help with safety netting because many balls were going into the neighbor's yards, and we actually went there and saw the netting completed. So this is great to see some of these projects come to fruition. So it's something we're very, very proud of. A couple of weeks ago, we provided a hundred and fifty turkeys to many of our children groups.
Anyone been to or have attended Bloomington High School? You'll have to comment in the chat or on, just a comment, let us know. If the batting really needed.
We're collecting toys. The toys will be given to one of our elementary schools in our unincorporated pockets, and also for our preschool, preschools throughout the Fifth District. So we'll be making sure that each one of these kids that are underserved and don't have a lot, give them an opportunity to have toys. And the last thing is next week, what we're doing on December tenth, every year I always adopt a school in the unincorporated Fifth District area. So we're gonna be in Bloomington at Ruth Grimes Elementary. We have a great relationship. We're working with SEBA. We're gonna provide In-N-Out burgers for the entire school. We'll be also providing toys. We'll have Santa Claus there. And wanna thank all the county departments that also participate and do nice things. So in the spirit of giving, this is one of the things we do every year, so I just wanna thank our county staff for doing a great job. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Armendaras?
Thank you, Chair. Wanna express an invitation to everyone who's out here. Also, we will also be having our open house, which we call our Jingle and Mingle. It'll be in the city of Upland at the YMCA on December tenth from five to seven thirty PM. We'll also be hosting a toy drive, so please bring your unwrapped gifts, and those will also be going to our nonprofits in our community in the Second District. We also had an opportunity to help three hundred families this year for Thanksgiving. We worked with, and wanna thank our county human services and community action partnership, our churches and our nonprofits in the Second District. We were able to give three hundred turkeys to residents of the Second District. We also were able to provide seventy-five turkeys to veterans in our community and help feed them during our Thanksgiving giveaways. Also, I sit on CSAC, which is the California State Association of County Governments, and was attending their annual conference, where I sit as the Vice Chair of Land Use and Transportation Policies, where we were actually discussing the sustainability of the replacement of the gas tax and how with the electric vehicles, we're just not getting enough revenue in to be able to support the roads that we have.
Wow, surprise, surprise. Okay, so I mean, I think that was a state measure of the gas tax, but I don't know how much San Bernardino County is relying on that. If you guys don't know, it was a tax added to gas vehicles, or to, to, when you buy tax, I mean, when you buy gas, extra tax on there. And the goal with it was to kind of use that funding to improve roads. Doesn't kind of make sense because electrical vehicles use the roads too, and they also tend to use, they tend to be more heavy and destroy the roads faster. So doesn't really make sense to just have a tax on internal combustion engine vehicles when, you know, electric vehicles are also adding to that damage of the road. And I mean, you guys already know, our infrastructure is, it needs to be redone yesterday, and you know, so anyways, let's continue. See what Mr. Armendaras says about that.
Addressing that issue. Also wanna give a special shout-out to Lena, who was our clerk of the Board, who was just named and appointed the President of the California Clerks of the Board Supervisors Association. Give her a quick hand. I was blessed to be able to attend that. I was able to watch her be sworn in, so look forward to a great year with you. And my last thing is a special shout-out to Noel Castillo. Where's he at, Noel? Thank you, sir. Your swift and diligent action in getting us the signage on Haven to hopefully prevent another suicide.
Oh, man, okay. Let's go over that. I didn't even, I forgot that that happened. So it, over a freeway bridge, unfortunately, I think it was a Los Osos High School student. Trigger warning, suicide. Big trigger warning. But yeah, let's go over that because that's very interesting, that they already took action to, to change that. Okay, let me find some news articles on that real quick.
Lot of work to do, but I am encouraged to see how quick you move, and I know the next phase of this will be coming shortly, so thank you. And that is all.
Thank you. So I would like to start by congratulating Joe Baca Jr., who was recently appointed by Governor Newsom.
Alright, hold on, Joe Baca Jr. Okay, let's try to read this. Oh, it's because I have ad blocker on. We're just gonna keep blocking those. Alright, well, let's just go back and read the... Alright, so officials identify second student? I didn't know that there was a second student. Here, let's go to the Reddit, because it's the IE subreddit that I first read this on. Man, so many things. Oh, I gotta log in. Nope, okay. Then I guess we can't, I guess we literally cannot cover that story. You guys will just have to take my word for it. There you go. That's the part of what I wanted to cover for my culture jamming project anyway, was the lack of not being able to get news in this, in this, in this, in the biggest county in the entire United States. We have trouble getting news.
To the State Advisory Committee on Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. So congratulations, Joe. Very cool. And I would also like the folks to know out in Barstow and the surrounding communities, that San Bernardino County's Public Defender is offering a mobile defense program that they will be providing mobile court services tomorrow, December fourth, from twelve-thirty to four, at the Barstow Church of God and Christ. Services at the event will include expungement assistance, re-enrollment in court-required classes. Our child support services and transitional assistance departments will be available to assist with active cases. ARMC's Mobile Medical Clinic will also be on-site, along with a variety of other local organizations offering free...
Alright, real quick, real quick, since I used to work at ARMC, it was Arrowhead Regional Medical Center. It's the entire county hospital for the entire county of San Bernardino County. Sorry for all the county, county. But yeah, they have a mobile medical clinic, and it is purposely used to serve undocumented immigrants in the IE. Or at least people who do not have insurance, but the plan was mostly that because it was just too expensive. Or I should say that people were going into the hospital at the, at the most painful time of whatever they were suffering, right? If you're going into the ER to get care that you should have gotten care for a while ago, but because you don't have a primary care doctor, then you can't go see your doctor to do that, then you're waiting for those things to get really bad, and then that's where the ER was getting impacted because, you know, people just couldn't get regular preventative care. So that was something that the hospital created to kind of help out with serving the populations of the county, so.
Resources such as food distribution.
Pretty good that they're gonna do...
And community support services.
Public defender type stuff too. I'm sure a lot of people would need that, so those two things kind of go together, and people need that.
So thank you all. And I wanna thank our county staff and the developer with Rancho Etawanda on item number fifty-eight. It's been a tremendous...
Real quick, I wanted to show everyone where you can find these Board Agenda items. San Bernardino County has a website, and then we just looked up for today's, or I mean, the date of that, that meeting. And what did she say? Number fifty-eight? Let's see. So it was a purchase and sale agreement for the sale of exempt surplus land in Rancho. So let's look at a little bit more information on this. Oh, I guess they're really not giving us that much information. But yeah, so it seems like this, I don't know if it was county-owned land in the city of Rancho Cucamonga, that they're trying, that they're gonna sell it to just get rid of it because it's surplus. But let's hear what Dawn Rowe has to say.
Effort to get this where it is now. We appreciate your investment in the county, and thank you very much to county staff for all the hard work and diligence that went into that. So thank you all.
That was nothing. Let's go back just in case.
Etawanda on item number fifty-eight. It's been a tremendous effort to get this where it is now. We appreciate your investment in the county, and thank you very much to county staff for all the hard work and diligence that went into that. So thank you all.
It literally does.
Organizations, off-municipal assistance departments will be available to assist with active cases. ARMC's Mobile, for you, all of those departments involved, those expungement fairs and the ancillary services that are... And I wanna thank our county staff and the developer with Rancho Etawanda on item number fifty-eight. It's been a tremendous effort to get this where it is now. We appreciate your investment in the county, and thank you very much to county staff for all the hard work and diligence that went into that. So thank you all. And with that, Lena, do we have...
She didn't, she didn't explain anything, and that's where it's like, what, what is, what is this? Like, you know, let me click on it. Oh, oh, no, no, that's all the info that's on their agenda documents. Let's see. Oh no, that's just all the agenda documents. Interesting. So yeah, it's like, small things like this that, what's, what's going on? It was a unanimous vote. They all agreed to sell, sell this land. You know, where, what's gonna be done with that money is, is my question, you know, and they don't really explain that. Not that I'm, you know, trying to make a big deal out of it. It's just like, there was no explanation. County staff was thanked, and we don't even know why, really. And I mean, I guess I can try to look into that a little bit more later, but again, it's like, this is the only place that you really know about what's going on in our county and where these big decisions are being made, and, and they're just like, nobody knows.
Any changes to today's agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we do. We have three changes to today. Item number fourteen, item number fourteen is being taken off calendar.
Let's see what number item fourteen was.
Item number fifteen is revised to add a new recommendation, number two, to read as follows. Adopt resolution approving an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement, and any amendments thereto for the Bond Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program Round One Launch Ready Grant. The remaining recommendations were renumbered accordingly. And item number thirty-eight, item number thirty-eight, recommendation number nine is revised to read as follows. Award a design-build services agreement, including non-standard terms, to EE O'Neill Construction of California for the amount of forty-seven million, two hundred five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars as the design builder for the Pacific Village Campus Development Project in the city of San Bernardino. Those are all the changes I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Our Board Members' Conflict of Interest, now is the time to disclose that, if any members have a conflict?
What?
Alright, seeing none, we move on to our consent calendar. I have a number of speakers signed up to speak on number fourteen. That is Senate Bill Forty-three, and I just want to reiterate, if you're here to speak on that, you're more than welcome to continue to stay in line and speak, but that has been removed from our, for our consideration for today.
Interesting. Okay, so they just took a whole, a whole action item off of the agenda. Amend resolution for the deferred implementation of Senate Bill Forty-three. Let's go over what Senate Bill Four, or I mean, let's at least look up what Senate Bill Forty-three is. It sounded like they had quite a few people there lined up to talk about it, and then they just took it off, and then now those people won't be able to talk until the very end, I believe. Let's keep watching, and I'll pull up more info on Senate Bill Forty-three.
Begin with Garth Pizant as our first member, who will be followed by John Chapman. Either podium on either side, it'll turn green when your time starts. You have three minutes, and when it flashes yellow, you'll have thirty seconds left.
Oh, there's some high-tech mics.
Thank you before the Honorable Board of Supervisors. Item thirty, Office of Homeless Services. Approve the following contracts for the provision of homeless housing assistance and prevention round four program services on behalf of the San Bernardino City and County Continuum Care in an aggregate amount not to exceed one million, eight hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and ninety-four... County Continuum Care in an aggregate amount not to exceed $1,843,94, uh, uh, for the contract period of December 3rd, 2024 through June 30, 2027. Item number 30, number 1D, Lutheran Social Services of Southern California in the amount not to exceed $327,000. Within jurisdiction, Lutheran Social Services, Central City...
All right, not to silence this gentleman, but let's just let that keep playing while we go over a little bit of, um, Senate Bill 43. Um, not that there's anything to go over, I don't know and we're not gonna go, uh, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna be able to explain it to you. But it seems like it's, um, something to do with, um, the unhoused population and their, uh, their, um, mental well-being and, and their also personal well-being. Um, so I think it's kinda interesting that the Board of Supervisors decided not to talk about that, um, or at least even explain it. Um, and I think it's really interesting too that there was quite a few people there lined up to talk about it and then now they can't. Um, so, let's see. Uh, the people of the state of California do enact as follow subject to subdivision, a licensed general acute health, healthcare, uh, care hospital as defined in subdivision. Yeah, see, this is the boring stuff. Um, but if we had, uh, someone in the media that could do explanation of this, that would be super helpful. But, you know, just not, you know, it would've been really beneficial to hear those people talk. Um, I don't know if they'll get time at the end.
I looked forward, I think we still will be, uh, working with the Sheriff's Department and others to, to fill those gaps. Um, and, uh, we've had a few discussions about that already. Um, you may not know that in San Bernardino County, we see over 1,700 patients per year per ED bay. In San Francisco, it's 800. There's a huge disparity on the way our EDs are impacted. And we look forward to working with you to put that delay in place and to find those solutions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Leanne Logan, followed by Raquel Martinez. No, Leanne Logan. All right, we'll move on to Raquel Martinez, followed by Dr. Sarah Raquel Martinez. All right, Dr. Sarah Khan.
Both are delayed in traffic.
Dr. Kevin Parks. And after Dr. Parks, we'll have Daniel Inez.
Where are all these people?
Hi, I'm Kevin Parks and I'm, uh, President of Mountain View Emergency Physicians Medical Group. And I'm an emergency physician at San Antonio Regional Hospital. And same as John, I'd come here to thank you guys for delaying SB 43. Um, working the emergency department on a daily basis, uh, it's no surprise to anybody how overcrowded we are. And additional patients being held in the emergency department really would be a critical problem for us. There's one concern that we had. The other is that as a 51, as somebody who's certified to ride 5150 holds, there's been no update to the training, no information passed out to any of us who do that yet. And although the, the intent of SB 43 is good and is certainly supported by us, the infrastructure just isn't there yet. And so, we're hoping that something can be worked out to delay the implementation to make this a successful program.
Thank you. Daniel, and I'm, is it Enz?
Enz, yeah, yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, Daniel Enz with Kaiser Permanente Government Community Relations Manager.
All right, Kaiser.
Um, just wanted to briefly state, um, for Kaiser Permanente, it, it's critical to allow the healthcare system to stand up necessary clinical pathways and treatment programs prior to the implementation of SB 43. Pushing this expansion prior to this would lead to exponential crowding and expanded boarding times in the already impacted emergency rooms in San Bernardino County, with Kaiser Permanente Fontana Medical Center being one of the highest-volume emergency rooms in Southern California. Not only will this have an impact on people seeking emergencies, emergency services for all causes, but will also not benefit those individuals being placed on 5150 holds under this expanded criteria as treatment currently, as treatments are currently not in place. There needs to be time for updating trainings for clinicians serving San Bernardino County clients so that appropriate utilization of the expanded, expanded hold criteria can be implemented. We currently do not have any involuntary chemical dependency treatment facilities. Therefore, it is critical to allow for time to identify and stand up the proper infrastructure to add these programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Megan Brahas, followed by Christine Yusuf.
All right, so it sounds like they are letting the people, um, speak on this bill. So, that's good.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board.
I'm getting more info.
My name is Megan Brahas. I'm the Regional Vice President with the Hospital Association of Southern California.
Pretty big.
On behalf of our member hospitals in San Bernardino County, I want to express our gratitude for your consideration regarding an extension of the implementation timeline for Senate Bill 43. While I understand that this item has been removed from today's agenda for vote, I hope that the importance of this issue remains at the forefront of discussions in the next few days. An extension and implementation is critical for refining programs, strengthening partnerships, and ensuring hospitals, along with community stakeholders, have the resources and readiness needed to implement this policy effectively. Our hospitals remain committed to collaborating with the Department of Behavioral Health, law enforcement, emergency medical first responders, and community organizations. Together, we can develop a care delivery system that addresses the...
All right, no offense to her, kinda boring, but I found an LA Times article explaining SB 43. Um, Governor Gavin Newsom urges county to expand conservatorship laws to combat homelessness and other crises. Um, California Governor Gavin Newsom is urging California counties to implement a new law that makes it easier to appoint a conservator to direct care of people suffering from mental illness or substance abuse in order to prevent further crises such as imprisonment, homelessness, or death. That sounds pretty good. Uh, I could imagine that a lot of people are dying on the streets or are not doing well on the streets and are getting sent to prisons or just, you know, running away or just literally dying in the streets. Um, county health departments have until January 2026. Okay, so that, that's real big for our county because, um, they have to implement this, uh, by January 2026. So, they have exactly one year from next month, right? Um, outlined in Senate Bill 43, which was passed by the legislator and signed into law by Newsom last October. Since then, only San Francisco and San Luis Obispo counties have taken advantage of the new law. Interesting. So, that makes sense why that gentleman, um, earlier was saying, oh, yes, uh, this guy, was saying that...
For us, that was one concern that we had. The other is that...
Saying that, um, Sa, uh, San Francisco County was, um, easier to do that because they have less people, which yes, that's true. But, you know, um, just because they have less people doesn't mean that it's easier. It's still a, a, an enormous task. So, um, let's go back to the article. Um, Los Angeles County, the largest county the state has done, has not done so. Okay, so, um, largest county in the state by population is what they're saying. Um, because then it's, I think it's us or probably Riverside County that's after, or might be Imperial. I don't know. Um, Newsom sent a letter to the Chairs of All States 58 County Board of Supervisors so that, so, um, Ms. Don Rowe got a letter from Newsom, um, on Saturday urging them to immediately expand conservatorship laws in their jurisdiction. All right, and they did not do that. They deferred or they're moving it, they're pushing it to the next board agenda item. Um, he wrote, "I am disappointed that only two counties in California have implemented this critical life-saving work to date and only a few others have plans to implement in 2025. I'm curious to know when our Board of Supervisor plans to implement it." And I mean, it's not like something they're being forced to do, do this. This is, this is a bill that we voted on, um, in the election. Um, I don't know which election, but, you know, this is something that the people of California said, "We want to do. Government, make it happen." So, that's this process. All right, they gotta make it happen. Um, uh, despite having unprecedented tools at your disposal to start helping our state's most vulnerable people right now, you are still waiting to implement this element of work, um, to improve our conservator syst, uh, conservatorship system until the absolute deadline. The bill introduced by Senator Susan Talamontes Egman from Stockton is a part of a decade-long legislative effort to amend the Lantern Parish Shore Act that passed in 1967. That, that law said that someone could be detained against their will if they are gravely disabled or pose a danger to themselves or others. I think that's what the gentleman earlier was talking about with the 5150 hold, but I'm not sure. In recent years, legislators have worked to overhaul the landmark law passed when Ronald Reagan was governor in an effort to address the statewide mental illness crisis, crisis made worse by homelessness and illicit drugs such as fentanyl and methamphetamine. Interesting. We've heard a lot about, um, um, fentanyl in our county, uh, and I think in the surrounding counties as well. Um, that dude Sheriff Discus, um, he's a big guy who talks about fentanyl all the time. Um, so, yeah, this is something that should be helping or, you know, this is part of the plan to help eradicate that. Okay, continuing. Um, critics who included the Human Rights, um, Watch and disability rights advocates urge that SB 43 could undermine the civil liberties of Black, Indigenous, and other communities of color, given the demographic of the state's homelessness population. That makes sense. Um, majority of our population are, of, of unhoused population is minorities. And who's gonna, they're gonna be taken into the care, uh, they're gonna be taken into care. We don't really know what kinda care that is yet, right? Um, others say that the measure risk overwhelming a mental health system already stretched to the capacity. Uh, Deb Roth, and, uh, you know, I think this is what the sentiment that we're hearing from, um, the other Board of Supervisors. Let's take a...
Thank you.
Uh, this gentleman's speaking again.
California Criminal Law, Penal Code 667.
Okay, we'll pause it right there. Um, but I think it's just gonna continue talking about SB 43. Um, so, uh, yeah, so the mental health system is already stretched to its capacity. Um, Deb Roth, a senior legislator advocate for disability rights, California, said the bill will lead to more use of conservatorship, which takes people's rights away. That's interesting. If you guys remember a movie that came out a while ago called, um, I Care a Lot, I believe. It was a Netflix exclusive. And it was about someone who was, um, uh, taking, uh, 2020, okay. It was about, um, someone who would take advantage of, uh, uh, people who are in conservatorships and just abuse them and take all their money. Um, con artist Marla Grayson makes a living by convincing the justice system to grant guardianship over elders whom she pretends cannot take care of themselves. She places them in assisted living facilities where they are sedated and lose contact with the outside world. She then sells off their homes, assets, pocketing the, the proceeds. So, yeah, a movie about that. Um, but obviously, it's still happening. Um, in his letter, Newsom described the bill as "a more expansive approach for delivering last resort behave, last resort behavioral health care to those in crisis." That is true. "Every day I hear about the life and death urgency of our behavioral health crisis. I see people languishing, languishing on the streets, often forgotten by their own communities." That's true. We just literally overlook them. "This is wholly unacceptable. The state has, um, updated our laws to ensure that people experiencing serious mental health is illness or severe substance use disorder or who are at risk of harming themselves can have a conservator appointed to the direct, uh, to direct, um, appointed her to direct their care." Interesting. I'm kinda iffy on this now. See, I didn't, I didn't know. We're looking through it together. It's, it's wild. Um, "with continued protection of individual rights and increased transparency on data, equity, and outcomes." So, this would be talking about the scary things that, you know, okay, sure, we, um, a homeless person who's not, not there, who has, um, substance abuse disorder and who, you know, um, clearly does not have it and i- cannot take care of themselves right away, um, because they have to overcome these other things. I can see how that would make it, you know, um, it's making it the government's problem. And, you know, for those of us who don't want government to be the solution for things, that's kinda bad. Um, but for those of us who do see the government as solutions to things, then this could be good. It just depends on how it's gonna be executed. Oh, and that's the end of the, the, uh, the report. Okay, let's continue back with this.
A sentencing scheme where the defendant will receive a prison sentence of 25 years to life if they are convicted of three serious or violent crimes.
Okay.
Jehovah God, the landlord of the universe, does not enforce the three-strikes law. Yet he may curse the ground you attempt to produce and still give you another chance and see to it that no one takes your life. Within jurisdiction, the San Bernardino Police Department claims impenetrable. Their investigation receptionist will not let the civilian speak to an officer without an open case. She speaks clear English and is still unintelligible. Also, officers that exist are not to be reached. Highly staffed and budgeted, they claim no federal bureau of investigation nor internal affairs. Top security for them, but not for the civilians. To the Honorable Board of Supervisors, let it be known that your districts have given business licensing and local land use to the world's largest drug cartel using as its front enterprise rental car and its affiliates, which has amassed the above over $12 billion, also supported by the City of Redlands Police Department, manipulated by an investigative trial. May God have mercy on someone's souls. To the city of San Bernardino, I have shook up China, the United States Social Security Administration, and the world. Give me what I want. Last night, I was kidnapped by five top agents of the United Nations. They bound me and hung me upside down. They commanded me to tell them, "Where will Jehovah's Witnesses be hiding at the culmination of this system of things?" At that, I panicked and I told them, I told...
We're just gonna skip through that. All right, let's see how they, should be wrapping up the meeting now. Oh, no, one more person.
Good morning, Honorable Board Members. Um, I'd like to talk this morning about an issue we're still ongoing, problem with vendors and also the ice cream trucks.
What?
I, I found, I was going through my paperwork and I found from an old MAC meeting back in 2009, which I thought I'd bring it to your attention because it was going on even back those days.
All right.
And this one item that came up at the MAC meeting was the problem with, at the Vermont School reported a serious problem with ice cream truck vendors parking close to the school at the end of the school day and caused more traffic congestion and things like that. And so, um...
What?
They, they kicked out, they said, uh, she reported that on August 6th, they held a kickoff for the Vermont Parent University and Supervisor Gonzalez hosted an ice cream social. But the Vermont School reported a serious problem with ice cream truck vendors parking too close to the school. And, um, they said, they told the, the people at the meeting that, uh, this district, the school district police department does not have the authority to enforce city laws in unincorporated areas. The city of San Bernardino enacted an ordinance in 1915 regulating, uh, vendor sales near school sites. And, uh, so I thought it was inappropriate. It's still going on, especially with the ice cream vendors. There's one in particular, I don't know his name, but they, they come around after about six, seven, eight, nine, 10 at night now. And it's really upsetting me because when we had our MAC meetings, we put an end to that. They only came out during the daytime.
Okay, so here's the, the, one of the interesting parts of the... Okay, so here's the, the, one of the interesting parts of these types of things where people come and just rant about whatever is bothering them.
He was suspicious about that because he approached one that came out at night and they were selling drugs and fireworks off their fire. And it's starting all over again. So I was just wondering if the county could start enforcing that even. And we're still having a problem with the food vendors around, um, on Duffy, I mean, on Darby Street, right east of, uh, Macy, because I went to the library last week and pulled up in the parking lot and on both sides of Darby Lane, on both sides of that street, there are vendors every day apparently there and they're causing a lot of traffic problems. And a guy approached me and I told, he told me, I told him, I said, "I know you're a vendor here, but we're in the county. You're not supposed to, uh, and he's told me, he had a reason to, he got a license from the city of San Bernardino." So thank you very.
Ah, they cut her off.
Thank you, Jane. That is the last request to speak that I have, so we will adjourn our meeting. Our next regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting will be held here in Chambers, December seventeenth at ten AM. Thank you all.
All right, so that was that. Um, yeah, so, uh, wild off the rails, uh, but not too crazy. Um, it's just a normal meeting. Um, so to go over what we covered, um, uh, new flag, um, SB forty-three, which, um, a bill to, uh, to push individual counties to do something with their homeless populations to help them out. Um, still more, still don't have that much info on that. I literally was looking up more, um, news articles and there's really not that much. Um, it's crazy. Uh, San Francisco, it's like no real big media outlet has covered it. It's just been kind of like some, I'm not even familiar with what these, like obviously we're not looking at Utah or, or, um, that, but, but yeah, just like, no, like. Yeah, so, um, so, yeah, SB forty-three, um, you can find the board, uh, board agenda items. I'll definitely put all these things in the comments. Um, and, yeah, so I kinda wanna turn this into a regular series, but we'll see. Just starting it off as a project. I don't even know if Dr. Corrigan's still here watching this anymore. If you are, please comment on my video. Um, I'm gonna say comment, uh, uh, who your board of supervisor, I mean, what, what district you are in if you live in San Bernardino County, which I'd imagine you would. Um, unless you live in like an unincorporated area, but still, you might have, um, one of these people. So if you made it this far, uh, go ahead and.